So 409, there's, I have, this is a big one, so there's a lot of changes here. So, General Admin, line 5100, I changed it to 58826. And Dave, could you do the calculation for that, please? I'm sorry. While he's doing that, I'm gonna move on to...
Fifty what?
Oh, 58826, fifty eight thousand eight hundred and twenty-six. Then moving on to 6015, seven hundred and fifty dollars. 6020, two hundred and fifty dollars. The printing and copy expense, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Maintenance supply...
Sixty twenty-five?
Sixty twenty-five was eight seventy-five. Um, I lost my place. I'm sorry, maintenance supplies? Sixty thirty, sixty thirty I changed to one thousand dollars. Board up expense, sixty thirty-six, thirteen thousand dollars. The operating supplies, sixty forty, fifty dollars. Going down to sixty one oh five, five thousand dollars. Cell phones, I zeroed out at, I made it zero, sixty five ten.
I'm sorry, sixty one oh five, five thousand?
Sixty, that's correct, Mr. Horvath. And then natural gas, I made sixty five twenty, five hundred dollars. The internet?
So sixty five twenty was what?
Sixty five twenty, five hundred. Sixty five forty, zero dollars. Going down, legal fees, sixty six forty, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Sixty six fifty-three, lot slash property maintenance, fifteen thousand dollars. Sixty six ninety-five, two thousand two hundred dollars. Seventy ten, travel, transportation, three hundred dollars. Insurance, seventy twenty, one thousand two hundred dollars. Dues and membership, seventy forty, fourteen thousand dollars. The abandoned house expense, seventy seventy-two, twenty-five thousand dollars. Seventy eighty-one, community promotions, one hundred and fifty dollars.
Which one was that?
That one was seventy eighty-one, community promotions, and it was one hundred and fifty dollars.
Seventy eighty-one?
Yes, seventy eighty-one.
And which was it?
One fifty.
What? Yeah, what's the number?
And then moving on, the abandoned house expense, seventy seventy-two, twenty-five thousand dollars. And then seventy eighty-two, fifty thousand dollars. And that's it for this one, I'm happy to repeat any of these.
What was seventy eighty-two, Mr. Horvath?
Seventy eighty-two was fifty thousand dollars. Again, happy to repeat, and I'm happy to, I'm flexible on all these numbers again.
What was sixty forty, operating supplies?
Sixty forty was fifty dollars.
Alderman, I'm just curious, have you talked to any of the department heads? Have you discussed this with any of the chiefs? Have you, I mean, is this something that you came home from work and just started doing on your own?
That's ex-...
You know, my frustration is that we have, and we pay for a CPA who is very qualified, who met with the department heads, who met with the chiefs. Mike, very qualified, again, they met with the department heads, with the chiefs. They all put their input into this. I don't understand how we can sit here and just go line by line and say, okay, let's do this. I think this is very unprofessional. It was done, it was done right, and it should be voted on properly. Or if we don't vote on it, then nobody gets paid.
Sure, so, thank you, thank you, Alderman.
Can I just address one line item here?
I'm a... Sure.
And, you know, you can do what you want, Alderman. Last year you spent, and this is on legal, you've already authorized for outside legal over one hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
No, no, I said I'm...
Just, give me for just a minute, if you will. You're reducing it to one fifty. Last year on outside legal, you spent six forty-nine, and in the two prior years, you spent over seven hundred thousand dollars, and that does not take into account the salary that you paid, and I don't know what the salary was, for your in-house counsel. If you want to reduce it to one fifty, then we'll probably have to notify the council that are representing the city of Blue Island on the various lawsuits that were retained prior to my coming. And also counsel that's representing the city of Blue Island on the workers' compensation cases, that there's no funds being appropriated by this city council to pay their legal bills. Now, you wanna play this game, I'm just telling you what the rules are and how you're gonna have to play it. So, when you have spent over an average of seven hundred thousand dollars a year on outside legal for the last three years, and you cut, and you're on a, you're on a plan that's gonna get you there this year, and you wanna cut it to one fifty, I think that's highly irresponsible. I don't know about any of your other proposed changes, I'm just telling you about the one that I've been trying to track, and I have no idea where you're getting your information.
Sure.
But your estimates, that were you published, or published to a newspaper back in, I believe it was to the South Town in February, where you said outside legal had dropped to one sixty-five, one hundred and sixty-five thousand in 2017, and one hundred and sixty-nine thousand in 2016? You were off in both of those two years by over four hundred thousand dollars in each of those two years. So, if you wanna be irresponsible in this regard, fine. I'll notify counsel that's representing the city of your position, and we'll find out if the city's gonna have any representation whatsoever. So I think you ought to be very careful about what you do with these numbers.
Sure, and I've said multiple times, Mr. Horvath, I'm very flexible on this, I'd be happy to change it, so...
You did not even inquire of me, prior to making this suggestion, what the numbers were. Flexibility has nothing to do with it. You come here to this city council, and you tell this city council to cut the legal representation fees to one hundred and fifty thousand, and you don't even know what you've spent the last three years. You spent over two million dollars the last three years.
Can you relax, I don't wanna be talked to like that.
You don't have to talk, be talked to like that, I'm gonna tell you what you guys spent, and then you're gonna be irresponsible and cut off the legal representation for the people in this town.
We haven't voted on it yet, we haven't cut it that yet, it's a suggestion. There's fourteen of us, there's fourteen suggestions here. Alderman, hello?
I didn't want to, um, we are sitting here to debate this, and I respect everybody here, we're very cordial, we're talking, we're going through each page, and it seems like we've had some inflection conversation from both sides. Mr. Attorney, if we have a question, I'd like you only respond if we ask you a question. We can ask you how much we spent, another Alderman can ask you how much you spent, but I think you're going overboard and overreaching by you not a member of this council. And I'm stating my opinion, I'm being very professional, I think it's overreached. If you're asked a question, am I asking you for a response? Just stating my opinion, which I'm elected to do, and even as a citizen, I'm elected to give my opinion, I think you've overreached, as a paid employee, to take part in a conversation with elected officials.
First of all, I'm not a paid employee, and secondly, Alderman, I have a responsibility to advise this council when it's acting. This is about a line item directly affecting the attorney. Without factual information.
I'm just stating, I think this is a very big overreach. We're having a conversation, we weren't even done with discussion yet. Where I'm sure one of these Aldermen here, we're gonna ask that same question, you overstepped and decided to answer for an elected official. And I'm just stating.
Let's move on, let's move on.
Oh, thank you.
All right, so, Alderman, I was kinda with you until I get to this page, and the information that we're working with here has been under review by finance in the city council for a month and a half or two months. And, you know, I learned in business a long time ago that the biggest advantage or disadvantage you can have in a negotiation is time. And we have no time. And this is a little late in the ballgame, these kinds of changes, where there's no chance to really research and understand what we're talking about today. We had a lot of iniquity. Our professionals have come to this after receiving a lot of iniquity. And a number of these changes, I can't afford it by, I don't understand them. And I couldn't possibly...
That's, yeah, that's, I understand, I totally get that. The appropriation was presented to us for a full vote at the city council last week. We've had since this January 1st to work on this. We voted on it a week ago. That's not, that's not my fault that we had this a week ago.
So you've had this for a month and a half?
Alderman, we had a meeting on February 20th.
And again, Alderman, there's no trust.
And if you had come, if you had come to that meeting, we could've done this line by line. We would've had the time.
And we're doing it now.
You and nine of your Aldermen chose not to show up to that meeting, and that was wrong.
It was wrong, there's no trust.
And so now, now we, there's no trust here either, with some of your things.
Good, that's...
And I'm gonna tell you another thing, now we have a deadline.
Okay, and I'm trying to work with you, I said I'm flexible, I...
No, you're not.
There wasn't, there wasn't a motion, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. There wasn't a, there wasn't a motion made on this. I said, I'm, I'm trying to be flexible here, I'll change these numbers.
But again, why do we have to be flexible with you? We've already worked with the department heads, with the CPA...
And why do we have to be flexible with you? We had eight votes last time.
Wait a minute, not with me, we went to the legal, the CPA, we went to the finance on February 20th. Now all of a sudden, why do we have to be flexible with you?
Alderman, if you wanna take a vote on the full appropriation, let's do that. I don't think it'll pass.
Well, then, you know what?
Let's do it, I'm trying to get this to pass, I'm trying to compromise, I'm trying to get these numbers together so we could do this. You're the one demanding we take a position on something, I said I would change my numbers.
Because it was professionally done.
And this is, I'm not, all the numbers I done with is right.
Not by somebody coming home from work and just crossing off things.
And every number I ever voted is this close.
It was professionally done, you never talked to the department heads, you've never talked to the chiefs, you've never talked to the CPA, you didn't talk to anybody. You just came home at night and started crossing things off.
Alderman, if you wanna take a vote on the full appropriation, let's do that. Let's do it. I don't think, it's, it's seven million dollars out of whack.
I guess it won't, because your nine Aldermen aren't gonna vote for it.
It's seven million out of whack, I'm trying to get us to a number we can agree on. But instead of offering discussion and talking, everyone's just voting no. And that's, let's have a discussion, I said twenty times now, I'm flexible on these numbers.
But we've had this discussion.
And we're having it again, we have time, this, this is still, we have till Tuesday, we have until the 31st, this is, we, there is time to do this, I'm trying to work with you.
City Treasurer, what is this due?
It's due April 1st.
It's due, officially March 23rd, but...
It's due tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay.
Okay. We don't have time. Mr. Treasurer, okay?
Thank you. I want to make one comment here, and kind of clarify, in my mind, in some of your minds, and then Mr. Horvath, we are self-insured. These line items, becomes, if it's a legal, or if it's a lawsuit, whatever you put in there, and it just, it's a hypothetical number, Michael. Because if we get sued, for a million dollars, two million dollars, half a million dollars, there's a risk management department there somewhere, but overall, there's no, there's no, we have no backup, two, three million dollars, five million dollars for lawsuits or legal. So, again, this is an appropriation, it's an appropriation, line item by line item. You could put, you could put fifty cents in my line item for legal. But if the, if you need a legal person, you need to get paid, you come back to council, you have to move money around. Simple. So let's not go back and forth, it was a hundred and seventy last year, two hundred and fifty, it was a million, we were a million eight, negative, the rep, for many years. Where'd that money at? Where'd it come from? So let's not, let's discuss like you were discussing, calm down, do what you best for the citizens of Blue Island, okay? And I'm only the treasurer, and nobody's ever mentioned that in here. Keep it up.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Tom.
So, the twenty thousand in building maintenance and repair, is that the air conditioner for the servers or the city?
No, that's for City Hall and various repairs and maintenance that need to happen at our City Hall, so...
Go ahead.
I would be remiss to say that I'm very concerned about all these reductions. This staff met over a month-long period, for many hours, to come up with these numbers to reduce the overall appropriations from 2017 to 2018 by five hundred thousand dollars. By continuing to reduce, this is going to reduce our services that we can provide to our employees, going to things like board up service. If we have properties in town that need to be boarded up, and we don't have the money to, we won't do it. We won't do it.
But the money, the money we spent last year, everything I've done is close to what we spent last year. I haven't gone over, I haven't cut it by much, it's close to what we spent last year. And again, I'm flexible to change these numbers, I, I don't know how many times I can stress it, I will change these. I'm trying to work with everybody here, I am, I, I have not said no to one of, one of the Alderman proposals. Anyone who said something, I said, okay, that's fine, if that's what the council wants to do, let's change it.
May I address the Alderman?
Sure.
Alderman, last year when you appropriated thirty-six million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, sixty-two dollars, did you go through this exercise with the city council?
No.
No, I'm just asking Alderman, I'm asking, I have permission to ask the Alderman a question, and I'm asking, did you go through this exercise with this city council?
No.
Can I, can I just answer?
Please answer.
So this is my fifth year on the city council. Out of four of those five years, we've done this exercise or something similar in this exercise.
Did you do it like this?
Last year.
You go to a committee meeting and do it there?
Tom's been a part of these four out of five years, last year was the only year...
I'm asking you to...
No, absolutely, I, I've been a part of this four out of five years.
Just answer my question.
I did, I've, four, four out of the five years, I've been a part of this, we did this.
I was just curious as to whether we went through this, you went through this or not last, last year on this, six million dollars.
Also wanna point out, we're gonna point out stuff from last year, which shouldn't really have anything to do with this year's budget for the future spending. We didn't have a finance director, we had nobody in the finance office, so we knew we had to appropriate as close as much as we can, because there was nobody there to give us an appropriation. So last year's a terrible year to look at, comparing to every year prior to that. We did have community committees of the hall. Last year this did go through finance, and was haggled through finance.
At all, okay.
Yeah, but we didn't have a finance director, it's a lot different compared to every year before.
Or even right now, we're, we're going through line items.
Anastasia went through it with us.
Um, without getting yelled at, and maybe you answered this last week, and I overlooked it, why is seventy twenty under, or, I'm sorry, seventy seventy-two under twice? The abandoned house one?
Again, that is for, one is for the legal expense, and one is for the reimbursement to actually take down the homes.
I guess to follow up on that, I was on the finance committee last year, and we did go through this area, and if there was a member on the city, but if there was a member on the city council who wanted to do this, I would've respected their wishes. There was, this was, this just didn't happen last year. I was on finance, so I was able to go through it, but this, we, this exercise didn't happen, but if, if Alderman Austin wanted to do it, but she was on finance, or, if Alderman Pools, who wasn't in finance, wanted to do this exercise, I would have...
If I understand Alderman Bellato correctly, Alderman Bellato said last year you did not have a finance director to help you prepare this, and so you voted on what you had in front of you, presumably with some knowledge of your own, I don't know. Now you have a finance director, a director of administration and finance, you have a CPA, you have a finance committee that went through this with the department heads, and it would seem to me that much more professional effort was put into it. Now, I'm not on your city council, I'm just looking at it, and I'm somewhat puzzled by the process. I'm somewhat confused, because it appears that questions haven't been asked of department heads, participation in a committee meeting did not take place, numbers are being tossed around without any substance behind them, all under the guise of flexibility. Well, it seems like the flexibility has been exercised by your professional consultants and your finance and administration director, but I'm just, I'm making an observation, because I'm somewhat puzzled, but this is your baby, you go ahead with it any way you want.
Again, if, if someone wants to move on the full appropriation, let's, let's do that. That's what, if someone wants to do it, let's do it. No, I'm serious, if you wanna, I...
Alderman, hold on.
Interested moving this along, I would like to suggest that we possibly reinstate legal fees where they were to, to what we spent last year. And, um, I'm nervous about board up expense, I don't know what's gonna happen on that. And the abandoned house expense, there are lots of abandoned homes that it would be nice to clear out, and I think that both of those line items, at least, I would like to see stay.
Okay, and I'm, I'm okay changing those back.
The other ones are small amounts that, I'm, you know, it's fine.
I agree with Alderman, Holly.
Can we clarify these numbers, so which ones are we putting where?
It might be...
So the, so there's no motion yet, so we're just...
I got something, I did.
So, the legal goes back to six fifty. The, oh, I'm sorry, line number, sixty-six forty. Seventy seventy-two, both lines of seventy seventy-two go back to where they were. I'm not sure what the grant pass-through expenditures are, I'm not sure if there's anything that's in there that specifically that we know is coming through.
That's again, in case...
In case we get some grants and we have it paid, yeah.
Alderman, you said both go back to where they were?
Yes.
Oh, I see, both of the seventy seventy-twos.
Dues and membership, I think is for the Southwest, or South suburban and Southwest Conference of Mayors, I'm assuming?
Yes, and yes.
And that is, those two organizations are granting organizations that give us cash to do some road projects and some other projects in town.
Yes, and at fourteen thousand, we would not be able to maintain those memberships.
And it was, uh, I'm not sure why it was appropriated at fourteen thousand last year, but then we spent twenty-four thousand, were we catching on?
Yes, we were behind on our news.
So the eighteen thousand is gonna get us to where we pay, the dues, it's not extra or anything like that, that's exactly what we owe.
That should be, unless there's of course a increase in dues over the year, but that would allow us to maintain our, and those associations. I'd like to see that stayed. The twenty-four was also for previous in 2016, because again, we were retired in our dues. So those are four amendments you're putting in there?
Oh, sorry. There's no amendments.
No, no, no. So sixty-six forty went back to six fifty, seventy forty went back to fourteen thousand, and the two seven, the first seventy seventy-two went back up to fifty, the second seventy seventy-two went to forty-five.
Yes.
And the dues, basically, that's why I said those are the only four. What was the other? What number was the board up? Board up is six zero three six. Thirteen is what it was. Put it back up to eighteen, is that what you're suggesting, Tom?
Uh, yeah. I'm just concerned that it's stuff with board up, and then, so you got constituents calling saying that there's an empty house, and people are breaking down.
Look at the other abandoned houses, while...
The abandoned houses is tearing them down, there's two different programs.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to come behind Alderman, Polly, and ask for a few more items to be restored. And in part, if we had more time to talk to staff and so forth, it would be a different story. It would be, um, so, maintenance supply, I'm assuming that our staff gave these things some thought and put these numbers here for a reason. So, I would like to restore, line item sixty thirty to five thousand. Line item board up, I think you talked about board up, sixty thirty-six, right? Yeah. Building maintenance and repair to twenty thousand, absolutely.
What number is that?
I'm sorry, that's the item sixty, sixty one oh five. You've legally restored, right, you asked me that. Did we go to sixty-six fifty-three lot property maintenance? I'd like to restore...
Which file was that?
Uh, sixty-six fifty-three to twenty-five thousand. I think that's the additional items that I would like to see restored. Any questions? Again, there's not, there's no motion on here, just any other...
Go ahead, Alderman.
May I just have a question, I know we just had a lengthy debate within line item legal fees. Is there a reason why this, just curious why this is under risk management? Is it risk management, does that fall to the attorneys, you know, everything we got going on litigation or fee?
Could you repeat again?
Yeah, I wasn't sure why the legal fee line item sixty-six forty, what's the purpose of it being on the general administration as opposed to being under risk management? Isn't risk management...
I have no idea.
But it is handed...
It's probably the way it's been in the past, Alderman, that's all I can tell you.
But it is hand in hand, right? It would be the same, it would be hovering over the same...
What is under risk management, I don't see it.
It's just claims and insurance premiums, so it's, it's appropriating for possible life insurance, well, there's life insurance premiums, medical insurance premiums, there's insurance in there for buildings and vehicles, and then there's some reserve for claims, property damage, workers' comp claims.
I can remember it was some insurance.
Those are the claim, that's for the claims themselves, so there's no attorney fees in there.
I was just on the assumption that, you know, all that falls under the umbrella of risk management, you know, all those items apply.
Not in disappropriation or, no.
That's all just a little clarification, thank you.
I have the recalculated salary amount at, at six thousand nine thirty-nine.
Six zero?
Six zero nine three nine, as opposed to the sixty-two thousand, we just passed a rule, we just rounded up, if you will. And what was mentioned earlier, by Alderman Donahue, was fifty-eight eight twenty-six. I've got it at sixty nine, sixty thousand nine thirty-nine.
And one of the associated...
And the associated I R F and whatnot, okay, so FICA, that's my item fifty-four hundred, FICA would be fifty-eight hundred. Medicare, fourteen hundred. I R F, seventy-five hundred.
So may I ask a question about where we are at this point? I personally have a problem with these salary cuts, for whatever reasons, it doesn't matter, I just do. I would probably vote for all these changes, but I don't wanna vote for the salary cuts. Can we vote for the salary cuts separately as a total item?
There are no salary cuts, there is no...
I'm sorry, pardon, yes, I'm right, correct, the, not to make...
Elimination.
Clearly, I'd like to separate that issue out, because I'm gonna vote against everything, and I don't want to. That's, you can, you can, that's fine.
You can make that motion.
All right, so I would move to consider the staff salary appropriation separately from everything that's on, I don't quite, I'll make the motion separately from everything.
You can make a motion to consider, is that line item fifty-one hundred?
Well, I think that, or, everything, I'm gonna wind up voting against everything that we're talking about here today, except we don't have the salary cap. But there's other things I do agree with, so if we vote on all these things together, I'm gonna vote against everything.
So you're saying sixty-two hundred and thirty-two hundred, or thirty-two thousand and sixty-two thousand?
Yeah.
You want those to stay as, as they are?
I do.
Is that your motion?
Yes.
You can make that motion to adopt those.
But that won't fail, probably, and then we're gonna vote on everything else? I mean, that's what I'm trying to get around.
Make the motion, you want to make that motion, and if you can get a second motion, because there's no motion on the floor at this time.
Right, I understand.
So, if you wanna make the motion to adopt those numbers, the sixty-two and the thirty-two, is that what you're talking about?
Right here, yes.
Along with the...
The associated...
FICA, Medicare, I R F, associated with that.
You can do that.
And if you get a second, and you're voting on those line items, all right?
All right.
And depending on the way the votes fall, they're allowed to be adopted or not adopted, and then you go on to, someone will have to make the motion on the other changes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry, Alderman Fairwood.
Okay, I'm sorry, Alderman Fairanewell, did you say that you want to, that the motion is without the 2% raise, right?
I want to move that the appropriation numbers as presented for salaries remain as present. They don't change.
But we changed them in the other departments?
I know we did, but I voted against them. And I'm gonna vote against everything here. If these, I remain locked in all this stuff, so I rather I have to...
Okay, I'm on the same page with you.
All right, thanks.
So there's extra...
Yeah, that's my motion.
Your motion is to go back on. 5100, 5200, 5200?
Mm-hmm, right.
5450 and 5500.
Right.
As they are presently listed in yours.
Does that cover the date? Yes, yes, okay.
Motion, do you have a second? Alderman pulls. Any questions?
So the Alderman are aware we'd be giving this department a raise and not the departments we've already covered.
Absolutely, yeah.
Not necessarily given a raise, allowing yourself to get...
Allowing themselves to get a raise.
Would you be flexible and go back and change? You can go back and not do that. Got all night.
Well, let's see how this turns out. Roll call.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fairanewell.
Aye.
Fairanewell, aye. Osley.
Aye.
Osley, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Pittman.
No.
Pittman, no. Slattery.
Abstain.
Abstain. Seb, Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellato.
No.
Bellato, no. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no.
Aye.
Mary Margas, aye. Viera is, is... Seven. One, two, yes. One, two, three, four, five, eight, five.
Eight, five.
And one, so correct.
Police Department?
No.
So they have a motion that you planned...
For Justice Department.
Is now approved. So those five line items will remain as stated.
That was just for this department, correct?
Yes.
So far.
So far.
Could I, when can I make a motion to go back and address the other issues?
You don't have to make a motion. There's nothing on the floor at this point. If you want to now make a motion to approve the, all the other line items that either as they are stated or as changed...
Well, I'd like to move that we, that all of the appropriation items relating to salaries remain unchanged.
That would be...
Throughout this appropriation.
Are you, are you?
Go backwards and forwards, okay? Can I do it?
Council is, I'm not... In the 401, there's... Those salaries were not changed because that motion...
Oh, yes.
The salary were not changed. Finance, the salaries were changed. So, and then clerk, clerk's salaries changed. Clerk's, clerk's salaries were changed. Alderman, the salary were not changed, so...
We took a...
So in those other two departments, only a person who voted with the authority can make a motion to reconsider those, all right? So unless someone wants to do that and then there's a second, cannot reconsider those. Going forward, you can continue to make your motion.
Can I make that motion going forward now to all of them?
You can if you buy.
I would like to...
If you get a second, that would be on every line item.
So 410.
410. Or 14.
420?
420. 430. So those are salaries that were...
430.
430.
And 450.
And 450.
414, 414, those are salaries. So 911, Davis, are any current salary-paying payers have just residual from the year on 414 for 911?
Those are already paid.
The residuals?
That's correct.
All right, so the line items, 5100, 5200, 5300, I'm sorry, 5100, 5200.
5400.
And 5400.
And 5400.
5450, 5500.
Correct.
And Police Department, 410.
Correct.
You... Fire Department, the same numbers, 420.
Right.
Police Works Department, same line items, that's 430.
Right, yeah.
The Building Department, same line items, 450.
Did you go 430?
Yes, 410, 420, 430.
Yeah, 495.
Those are part-time employees. Did you figure raises for part-time employees?
495, we want of those.
Yeah. Yes.
So it would be 5100, 5200, 5100, 5400.
Yes.
5500.
Yes.
Correct.
Correct. Same rec center, same thing.
Same line items, rec center, what's that, 497, is that right?
That's correct.
And Water, you know, same line items, 6100, 5200, 5300.
Yes.
400. 5450, and 5500.
Right.
And would this be...
Bill, this is just the salary increases. This is a new salaries.
By the formula of water.
Yes. You're just doing salary, the 2% salary increase.
For non-new.
In every, in 550, 6100, 5200, 5300.
Right.
5400, 5450, and 5500.
Right, right. They might do it. So, well, the library, I don't know, I guess, yeah.
That's pretty easy. The library is definitely your...
All right, thanks.
So your motion is that to... Kevin. Leave the proposed, opposed appropriations.
As, stay as stated here.
For those line items. 410, 420, 430. 450. 495. 497. 520. 550. And 90, 90.
I think you got it.
410, 420, 430, 450, 495, 497, 520, 550.
That's your motion.
Yes.
You can't do 410. There's, the clerks are in a union.
I can agree.
The clerks for the police department are in a union along with, obviously, the police officers.
The police, the police department are what?
In a union.
They're in that...
So the civilian, the civilian is also in the union?
Yeah.
They're, they're...
So we're not gonna...
They're always saying they're not gonna touch.
We're not gonna touch, okay, so fine. She says that's, I'm sorry, let me understand what you're saying.
Police clerks are in a union. It's under 410, so that would be...
They're covering their bargaining unit.
Part-time.
Right, sorry, 4, yeah, 410.
Yeah. I think, although, you're suggesting that...
It shouldn't be...
Shouldn't touch it because it's part of the...
Right.
I think that's what he's, that's what Alderman needs.
Yeah, that makes sense. 410, you can't.
The way you're doing it, you're asking... That's what the clarification's...
And we're having... I guess that's gonna say something. You could include it. I don't want it to change.
Yeah, it's not even, I mean, you can have it.
It's redundant, but you could leave it in because I guess that isn't for not to change.
Please, the building and housing, as they are presently set for...
Okay, you're right, right, yes.
Excluding the other one, excluding finance and clerk? Right?
Because we did that.
Whatever we voted on.
Yes, whatever we did, I can't, I can't.
I'm just making sure I understand.
You're right, you're correct.
Someone voted yes on those.
Somebody who voted yes, yes, but you have to change that.
Oh, yeah, that's our answer.
Why don't we take care of this motion? Is there a second on this motion?
Second by Alderman Osley. Any questions?
I just want to say, most of the people who are collecting higher salaries are of course gonna get the larger increases. And most of these people don't even live in town. So basically, they're taking their money, we're paying them, you know, 75, 85, 90,000 a year. They're taking their paycheck and leaving our town with it. It's a huge drain on our town. They're not paying property tax here, they're not paying sales tax here. And then we're gonna expect our residents to make up the shortfall by charging a restaurant tax, you know, increased ambulance fees, parking fees, increased water bills. It just doesn't seem right to me to hand out raises and then expect our residents, many of whom, as you know, live below the poverty line, to make up the difference in these things.
I understand, I understand your point, but I disagree with it. Because I think it's more important, it's most important, that we have the best possible talent running the city. And these increases are not large.
No, and I don't think...
You know, and I just, that's my, that's my reason for wanting to retain this.
Turning that, turning that around, these increases are not large. Everyone's gonna walk away from their job. If you're making 69,000 a year, you're not gonna walk away over $1,000.
I just disagree. You're not probably gonna walk away. You, you might. But more, it's more of a question of going, ongoing, attracting good talent, showing faith in our employees, on our staff, who I think are highly qualified. And, but that's just how I see it. And I respect your point of view, but that's, I don't agree with it.
If there's a motion, a second, questions, go ahead. Just to clarify before I make a comment, so I'll make sure I understand. This motion for line items going forward for salaries.
Correct.
To leave in the 2% increase that they get.
If they get it, right, as if an appropriation is not...
Exactly. We constantly talk about, we're in a revenue situation. I, I'm a union person, and I can understand the sympathy of getting a cost of living increase and all that. But if we're making cuts and talking about raising certain taxes and fees, I can't sit here to represent all the people that talked to me, the 300 some people that talked to me on Tuesday about these revenue enhancements, and vote for any kind of increase, real or not, appropriate or not. I can't give a yes vote for that. It's just, it's just how much money, it's not about the money. It's about voting for a possibility of giving our employees a raise.
If I could just stand?
That's all.
Alderman, well, I, again, I think you're making a good point. I'm gonna disagree with it. Because I think our job here is to make hard decisions. And I think this is a hard one. And I respect what you're saying, and I respect what Don McCarren is saying. But I think it's most important for us to have the best-run town we can have. And I think it's important to that.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fairanewell.
Aye.
Fairanewell, aye. Osley.
Aye.
Osley, aye. Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr.
No.
Carr, no. Pittman.
No.
Pittman, no. Slattery.
No.
Slattery, no. Pulos. Pulos, no. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Bellato.
No.
Bellato, no. Viera.
Aye.
Viera, aye. Rita.
No.
Rita, no. Donahue. Donahue, no. Correct.
Aye. Aye.
77 fails.
Motion fails.
Back to 401.
General Administration.
Right, General.
General Administration.
Since there's gonna be, looks like there's no spirit for compromise. Like I said, I agree with Alderman Osley. Let's just vote on the full appropriation now. Or vote this, and we'll vote at City Council.
This is, you want to vote on the full appropriation?
Yeah, that's, if there's, I don't...
Do you want to adjourn the committee at the hall and just go and just take a three-minute break and then come back and let Alderman Osley have a committee meeting? And then vote on the full appropriation? You can't, you can't adopt an ordinance in the committee of the hall. You can only adopt it at a special, which is notice, notice per 715.
Sorry.
But they have to have a planning committee meeting as well to approve whatever, uh, general findings. You want to just take a short, if you want to make a motion to adjourn this guy right now, you get a second, and then you all agree to that, and then you want to put this thing on the floor? It's up to you. That's what City Council so agrees, and I think you ought to take a roll call on the adjournment of this meeting.
If there's a motion, that's the motion.
So what are we doing?
Can I make a comment?
Go ahead.
There's no motion on the table. Can I?
Go ahead.
Can I, can I have a floor? Listen, I think we're a little slow in getting started, and we started kind of going, make a little headway. To see that page is moving forward, there won't be compromise. It's probably, I would say, not a true statement. I think moving forward, I think there will be some... Especially, we've been having some people say it will be in accordance. We're in agreement with cutting certain things or doing certain things as is. Just keep going, it's actually not...
I asked for this vote so that I didn't have to vote no on everything else.
That's, it's, I'm gonna be popped out over by the city attorney, and I'm trying to work with everybody here. But all I'm being told is, this is unprofessional, this isn't right.
You gotta, you gotta rise above that.
No, I am trying to rise above it.
You got to.
I'm trying to work with everybody. This is a chance to be, to work with everyone. And no one's, all I'm getting is, this is unprofessional. Work with me. Let's work, Jen. Let's, let's work on this together. Let's get this done. Let's build that trust back. That's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to build this trust back with you. Let's work on this together.
All right, let's go on. Let's move on.
Yeah, let's not get into it.
Let's just do our business.
All right, go back in here.
All right. All right. I, I, going back to what we've talked about before the Alderman Fairanewell brought up the 2% separate motion. And the changes, I'm gonna agree with the 50,000 abandoned, all these that we talked about, your, your changes. The legal fees, I know 150 is pretty low. But we're here to tighten the belt. How can we go back to the appropriation from last year, $500,000? And that's not even halfway. That's just lowering it a little bit. And I agree with all these other changes on this year. But...
I, I'm just concerned because we actually spent six hundred and fifty thousand, and we haven't really settled any of the lawsuits that were going on last year, so there's still additional...
And I respect that, and that's my second part, if there's something that catastrophic, it's gotta come to council anyway to, uh, move some money in. And we have to at that point.
Well, there's a lot of things that didn't come through city council that they were moving money around, so I, last night, so I don't know.
Well, this is a new world we're in, right? New council, I think they have to come back to council, and we'd have to hear a good case for it, and probably approve it because it's right and it would. So I'd like to make a motion then, going back, I'll read through the line items where we left off prior to the, um, two percent motion, continuing the trend from the pre- previous, fifty-one hundred would be sixty thousand, nine thirty-nine. Fifty-four hundred would be fifty-eight hundred, fifty-four fifty would be fourteen hundred.
Yeah, we would be going for that, yeah. Those are staying.
Oh, we already, that was...
All the salaries are...
All right, then, then going down to the sixty fifteen, seven fifty, sixty twenty, two fifty, sixty twenty-five, eight seventy-five, sixty thirty, five thousand, sixty thirty-six, thirteen thousand, sixty forty, fifty dollars, sixty-one oh five...
No, wait, hold on, I'm just, so I asked, I did ask for five, sixty thirty to be restored to five thousand?
I did.
I just, oh, I'm sorry.
Sixty thirty-six was eighteen...
I'll, I'll catch that, sorry. So restoring that one to five thousand, sixty thirty-six, thirteen thousand.
No, eighteen thousand.
Eighteen thousand, that's right.
Yeah, all right, eighteen, right, that's down there, yeah.
All right, so sixty forty, fifty dollars, sixty-one oh five, two twenty thousand, um, sixty-five ten, zeroed out, sixty-five twenty, five hundred.
Alderman, I think Alderman Farrenwald has changed sixty-one oh five to fifty thousand.
Uh, it's, it's twenty thousand.
Yeah.
Yeah, see, he said, yeah, yeah, he said, yeah, that's right.
I'm sure they all heard right.
Sixty-five ten was zero?
Sixty-five ten was zero, out across the board, yeah. Sixty-five twenty, five hundred, sixty-five forty, zero, sixty-six forty.
Wait, I'm sorry, did you say sixty-five forty, zero?
It wasn't made a recommendation to change, would you like to change?
There's two sixty-five tens. The telephone ones, I believe, that you were referring to.
I see.
Sixty-five ten, one hundred and forty, is it?
There's two of them.
Right, sixty-five ten telephone, one forty, I'm not, we're not talking about that.
Okay, gotcha.
Sixty-five ten, the one underneath, that was zero, we're leaving a zero. Sixty-five twenty, five hundred, sixty-five forty, zero, then the next, sixty-six forty, five hundred, but that's the change. Sixty-six fifty-three, twenty-five thousand. Sixty-six ninety-five, twenty-two hundred, seventy-ten, three hundred, seventy-twenty, twelve hundred, seventy-forty, eighteen thousand, seventy-seventy-two, fifty thousand, seventy-eighty-one, one fifty, seventy-seventy-two, forty-five thousand, seventy-eighty-two, fifty thousand.
A hundred and fifty thousand.
The one fifty?
The community promotion.
A hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty thousand.
That was a U D one.
And seventy-eighty-two, uh, I wanted to leave where it is, because the grant passed through, and if we get grants, I'm not...
I, I am fine with that change, okay, is that, I catch them all?
Definitely.
I'd like to make a motion, make a motion, what I decide.
If there is a question, sixty-fourty internet.
Appropriate, why is there no expense on there? There's no expense in internet. That could have been an accounting thing.
Just put that telephone.
So that, that's all right then, zero, zero, I'm just confused, there's a line item for internet, nothing's spent on it, and I'm pretty sure you guys had internet in there for the past year.
Was that run through telephone?
No, it's bad, it's very bad, on our upstairs.
Not, not bad, or...
Yeah, but you're still...
No, I, I use a jetpack, I have, I don't have it.
You don't have internet?
Nope. I'd like to point out, it's still the Alderman discussion here, I call out Mr. Borbad, I'm gonna call out Mrs. Brown. Thank you. So, that's, that, okay, I'll make a motion for those changes I listed off. Now, second.
Second by Alderman Farrenwald, any questions, roll call, please.
Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald, aye. Osling.
No.
Osling, no. Thompson. Thompson, aye. Carr.
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman.
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Pulos.
Aye.
Pulos, aye. Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Alado.
Aye.
Alado, aye. Viera.
No.
Viera, no. Rita.
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Two no's, you're on.
All right. All right, police department, may? And I have a question, I ask for a line fifty-one oh hundred, fifty-one hundred, that's non-union, or is that union? Is that everybody?
That's both union and non.
All right, can we separate the two percent out for, obviously, we can't discuss union contracts.
Correct.
I know, even though we're in negotiations, I'd like to leave that there, if we could take out administration, and my change would be affecting administration only.
And that change would be elimination of the two percent for non-union?
Non-union, yes.
Do we know what that number is, how can we know that number?
I'm asking, that's right. And obviously, the follow-up of the, the bike, that's...
Right, I, um, I don't have enough information right here to know every single person that's used this unit on. So that, that's gonna have to come later on, I have to go back to the, the...
All right, let's bypass that right now. My next one would be fifty-three hundred. Ten thousand. Fifty-eight hundred, fifteen thousand. Fifty-three hundred salaries overtime civilian.
Okay, what's the number?
Ten thousand. I said salaries overtime civilian.
Well, that's thirty-four thousand.
Yes.
You wanna change to what?
Ten thousand. Under fifty-eight hundred, training, fifteen thousand. Sixty fifteen, office supplies, sixty-five hundred, sixty twenty, sixty-five hundred.
Slowed it, slowed it.
Right.
Sixty twenty was how much?
Sixty-five hundred.
Okay.
Sixty twenty-five, twenty-five hundred. Sixty thirty, twenty-five hundred. Sixty forty, twenty-two fifty. Sixty-one hundred, seven fifty. Sixty-one oh five, seventy-five hundred. Sixty-one ten, fifteen thousand. Sixty-one eleven, ten thousand. Sixty-one twenty.
Did you say sixty-one ten, fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand.
And what was sixty-one oh five?
Seventy-five hundred. Go back, sixty-one eleven, ten thousand. Sixty-one...
Sixty-one eleven is ten?
Ten thousand.
And then, I'm sorry, can you go back to sixty-one oh two and oh three, you're rattling these?
I didn't go, I didn't change that, those are non-changed.
And then, how about sixty-one hundred, sorry?
Sixty-one hundred, seventy-five, seven hundred and fifty.
Seven fifty?
Yes. Sixty-one eleven, ten thousand. I'm skipping sixty-one thirteen, I'm skipping sixty-one eighteen, sixty-one twenty, seventy-two thousand, sixty-one thirty, fifteen hundred, sixty-one...
Twenty was seventy?
Seventy-two thousand.
Seven-two?
Seven-two, comma, zero, 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 dot, dot, zero, zero.
Thank you.
All right. Sixty-one thirty, fifteen hundred. Sixty-one forty, ammunition and guns, four thousand. Sixty-five ten telephone, eleven thousand. Sixty-five twenty, let me go back to the notes here, we didn't pay, same thing as the previous page, we didn't pay anything out, so it was zeroed out. Down to seventy-ten, travel and transportation, one thousand, seven hundred and fifty. Seventy forty, three thousand. Seventy fifty-five, two thousand. Seventy seventy, fifty-five hundred. Seventy seventy-five, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And the next page.
Seventy seventy, sorry?
Seventy seventy? Fifty-five hundred. Next page, is there two pages on this one? Vehicles, eighty fifty, zeroed out. Those are my changes. Open to suggestions. And we, I took off the table, the staff.
Yes, right. All right, so I got some questions, I guess, probably for staff, about some of these items, uh, if I might. Uh, just bear with me here, so, the, equipment, exactly, because I'm assuming that we, the numbers were put in for a reason.
Yes.
So, sixty-one hundred, obviously, it's, we only spent six hundred and fifteen, we're asking for five thousand, I guess, one, why, right?
Which one?
Sixty-one hundred.
Sixty-one hundred.
Make, equipment, maintenance, and repair.
Can, um, Chief King, yawn hand, I don't wanna put down this spot, this is a big one.
Which one?
Sixty-one hundred, I believe.
It's the equipment, maintenance, and repair for five thousand dollars is the appropriation.
We spent...
We only spent six hundred and fifteen dollars last year.
Equipment, maintenance, and repair, is that for squad cars?
No, it's equipment, not squad cars, different line item.
That could also be for unforeseen equipment and repairs, and we didn't have very much in twenty seventeen, which means we could have a lot.
You may have some questions.
Go ahead.
You mentioned in one of the meetings that a lot of our radios are gonna be, this, this is part of, we can't use them anymore, they have to be replaced.
Radios, uh, currently are remaining unchanged at six-one-one-eight.
Yeah.
Equipment could be pages, we have pages, we have, um, weapons, we have, um...
I, I, that's a separate line item, guns and ammunition is a separate line item, that's, we, like, four thousand.
What do you mean?
There's four thousand in guns and ammunition, so wouldn't be guns.
That would be different, a gun than ammunition, the ammunition is a train, and we qualify.
Alderman Slattery, go ahead.
Uh, just 'cause I work in a jail.
Thank you.
Three thousand dollars for prisoner care, are you anticipating on arresting more people and giving them better happy meals?
What's that?
For prisoner care, seventy fifty-five, um, we spent eighteen hundred dollars, um, this year, you're anticipating three thousand dollars, are we addressing more people?
Again, this is an appropriation, uh, this would be what we felt comfortable with.
My county charges a dollar twenty-five a trade, I work in a Bay County, it's a jail.
It was also cut from last year's appropriation, nine thousand as well, I guess it was.
We only spent eighteen hundred.
Sixty-one oh five, at building maintenance, is that the air conditioner for the servers?
Yes, that is.
Okay, then I would suggest that we stay with the forty thousand, because we can't, can't our servers go down.
All right, I, I have no problem accepting the change.
I still got a long list here.
I'm sure.
Wait, all right, sixty-twenty, and really, I'm directing Mr. Stamp, sixty twenty-five, printing and copy, um, four thousand, when we spent, four thousand. What does that seem like to you, can we come down?
That, that relates to our printer and copy your service agreement, we spread that across all the different machines, there are two machines in the police department.
Okay, I accept the change, Mr. Farrenwald.
Thank you. Uh, maintenance and supplies, uh, again, four thousand, we spent twenty-five hundred, uh, you went down, I started at twenty, I'm okay with that, I guess, all right.
Twenty-five hundred?
Yeah. Okay, uh, we talked about sixty-one hundred, no, we didn't, yes, we did, yes, we did, sorry, sixty-one oh five, oh, yes, but...
I don't think we made a decision, sixty-one hundred, did you wanna leave it at five thousand?
I, you know, again, I, I wished I could say definitively something, but actually, no information.
Equipment, I gotta have to come to... You know, they would have to come through committee.
Yeah, I know, I, I sure, again, I don't like this, but yes.
So we're changing that to?
Twenty-five hundred.
Twenty-five hundred.
Yeah, we, this was, we should, this is the last, maybe, but anyway. Sixty-one oh five, building maintenance and repair, uh... I'm sorry, yeah, we, we...
That's like...
Sixty-one ten, uh...
What is in there?
Yeah, right, it's...
Yeah, vehicle truck, maintenance, and repair.
Fifty thousand dollars, vehicle truck maintenance and repair, it's up a lot.
That's brakes, suspension, um, we've had some train blow, was it transmission or...
We had vehicles that, was involved in accidents, they had to be repaired.
Painting, striping, the last year we spent fifteen, so appropriated twelve.
I know we spent five thousand dollars at the last...
And then up to fifty, so is there other stuff that needs to be done, or, I mean, yes?
I'll make a compromise, all right? We eliminate the brand-new cars, I'll leave the fifty thousand alone, I recommend it.
How does the police department feel about that?
We're eliminating the new cars, but we're gonna leave the fifty thousand dollars in repairs.
Well, the vehicles were for contingency, that's, is, is the term, that's below the line.
All right, so I know, I know, um, then I, just another compromise.
I don't know, I think we should leave it at fifty thousand, personally, I would, I think that our police cars need to run.
We always spend fifty thousand.
It's appropriation, let's not forget.
I'm calling the police, I want them to come.
They don't have all the figures for this year already, but we've already spent quite a bit of money out of that, it was for the squad cars that we purchased last year on the lease, and they had to have, uh...
Well, the one right above, we left at forty, how about we leave this one at forty now?
And just remember, these are brand-new cars.
Yeah.
So, so, wait, that's gonna, what's four?
Sixty-one ten, you said forty.
Forty, yeah, all right.
Now, now, we're at forty.
Forty.
Do you happen to know what we spent already, Dave?
No, I don't have the current year's figures in front of me, but we had, um, like...
It's higher than expected, I'm, they come up, those invoices come across my desk, and they're more frequent than I'd like them to be.
Well, I mean, I go to forty, if you wanna leave it at fifty, I go with that too, I mean, this, I don't know, they're, they're probably gonna come to us and ask for more, so...
Is that all, I'll go through them again?
No, no, I'm at the sixty-one eleven, uh, so you were down to, were you down to ten?
Ten.
Ten thousand, all right, uh, vehicle trucks and parts, so again, how are we, actually, people who know, uh, how are we looking, if we appropriated fifteen thousand, we're talking about giving you ten thousand, how's that work?
We were, we cut it down by five thousand dollars when we were preparing the budget, we felt that that would be a comfortable number for, for vehicle trucks, for vehicle truck parts.
I'd like to leave it at fifteen, then. I'm fine, all right, thank you. Ammunition guns, we did, just like we talked about, so it was five thousand, it was four thousand last year, uh, you wanna come back out at four thousand?
Yes.
How is our police department feel about that?
For, uh, sixty-one forty.
Sixty-one forty, sorry, sixty-one forty.
Ammunition and guns.
Right, I definitely want them to have enough of all.
It's mostly for, it's mostly for practice, I believe, we don't run around shooting.
Yeah, right, no, good, I just don't want them to...
Well, we also want them to practice.
We want them to practice, and we don't want them to shoot you.
One of the other things, we use an insemination, we're gonna be doing a, um, an exercise in item now for active shootings, and we need insemination as well, and that falls up under ammunition, it's a little bit more expensive than it's regular ammo.
All right, so...
It's only a thousand bucks, yeah. And I'm just curious why, I still understand why we didn't spend money on natural gas, I guess.
Is that part of the municipal agreement?
Mike, this would be, or anything above and beyond, was covered under the franchise agreement, uh, and again, that could have been an accounting thing, I'd wanna go back and check.
You know, where they, I would be, or... Is that it?
Yeah, it's, I'll go through them again, so we're on the same page.
Can I touch?
Yeah, Mike, go ahead.
The training, fifty-eight hundred, that was so that we could spend our new administrative staff to staff and command at Northwestern, that's why we increased that to the, um, the twenty thousand, and by cutting that down to fifteen, we would not be able to send our staff to that training.
Okay, I agree.
And that also goes down to, um, travel and transportation, ties into that, um...
What was it, I got seventeen fifty?
Travel and transportation, seventy-ten.
Four thousand, that's kind of, we do like twenty-five hundred? That's a lot of travel.
It is, up at, well, I don't know.
That's a lot of travel. I traveled, I'm going to Philadelphia in a few weeks, I'll be in Minneapolis, that's a lot of travel expense right there.
I defer to the few.
Travel and transportation also includes, uh, if we had to go out of town for want to things, that should be covered in there.
So you spent seventeen oh six, I'm, I'm compromising at twenty-five hundred, increasing it to twenty-five hundred, you okay, chief? Alderman, or Mike, I'm sorry, Mike.
If the chief is okay with it, I'm okay with it.
To answer your earlier question on the sixty-one ten, through, through February, sixty-one ten, the vehicle truck maintenance...
To answer your earlier question on the sixty-one ten, through, through February, sixty-one ten is a vehicle, truck, maintenance, repair. So far, we've already spent sixteen thousand one hundred and seventy-seven dollars. All right, so I think forty, that's about, as long as it's not catastrophic, and again, if there is.
Go to the committee.
All right, I'm gonna repeat them again then, we're leaving fifty-one hundreds alone, I'm skipping down to fifty-eight hundred, twenty thousand? Uh, oh, wait, I skipped fifty-three hundred, I'm sorry, I skipped over fifty-one hundred, fifty-three hundred, ten thousand, for salaries overtime civilian.
I would defer to Chief on that, that is, since we are operating the police department twenty-four seven, manning the front desk. There are times where people call off, then we do have to call people back.
We spent five thousand last year, that's double the amount.
This is the first year that we're manning, first calendar year, we're manning the police department twenty-four seven, at the front counter.
All right, fine. The nine-one-one center, you say?
I understand, it's thirty-four, we leave that one at thirty-four. So then I'm, my first change would come down to fifty-eight hundred, training would be twenty thousand. Sixty fifteen, sixty-five hundred, sixty twenty, sixty-five hundred, sixty twenty-five, four thousand. Sixty thirty, twenty-five hundred, sixty forty, twenty-two fifty, sixty-one hundred, twenty-five hundred. Sixty-one oh five, forty thousand, sixty-one ten, forty thousand, sixty-one eleven, fifteen thousand. Sixty-one twenty, seventy-two thousand. Sixty-one thirty, fifteen hundred.
Sorry, what was sixty-one twenty, what did you say?
Seventy-two thousand.
Sorry, again.
Sixty-one twenty, seventy, did you say?
Seventy-two thousand.
Seventy-two.
Sixty-one thirty, fifteen hundred, sixty-one forty, five thousand, sixty-five ten, eleven thousand, sixty-five twenty was zeroed out because we don't pay it. Seventy-ten, twenty-five hundred, seventy forty, three thousand, seventy fifty-five, two thousand, seventy seventy, fifty-five hundred, and seventy seventy-five, seventy five, seven hundred five, seven hundred and fifty dollars. I'd like to make that as a motion.
We got a motion, we got a second, Alderman, Kulos, any questions? Roll call, please.
Oh, yeah, right. I made the motion. Where's that?
Eighty-seven.
Oh, I forgot about eighty fifty. Can we do fifty? It's a contingency anyway, and I'm sure if you're gonna buy the cars, you're gonna tell us.
It's gonna, any car we've purchased is going through committees and city councils already.
So are we okay with that?
Yeah.
We got a motion, you got a second? I think we got Alderman, uh, Kulos. Seconded, questions? Roll call, please.
Aye. Hawley, aye. Farenwald?
Aye.
Farenwald, aye. Osley?
No.
Osley, no. Thompson?
Aye.
Thompson, aye. Carr?
Aye.
Carr, aye. Pittman?
Aye.
Pittman, aye. Slattery?
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Kulos? Kulos, aye. Frosto?
Aye.
Frosto, aye. Alado?
Aye.
Alado, aye. Viera? Viera, no. Rita?
Aye.
Rita, aye. Donahue?
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Two no's.
Just a point of clarification, I know it was stated before, these salaries overtime for non-union, that was going to be no increase, is that?
Yes, non-union.
No, it was.
He took that off.
Yeah, he took that off, yeah.
Cause we couldn't, we couldn't break it away.
Okay, so it's staying as presented.
I didn't touch it, thank you very much. Now, I'm glad you got to touch the part, I don't think we even have fire on here, I'm, let's stay in order, I'm gonna confuse myself. All right, nine-one-one?
What was the, uh, I'm sorry, the vehicles, what were the fifty thousand?
Um, nine-one-one, the only, I have more of a question. And I think I asked this before, under fifty-one hundred, thirty-one, eight fifty, is that because, uh, they were here for the beginning of the year?
That's for approved but unused benefit time and some part of the time that they.
It's already been paid.
And we're not gonna approve any more expenses.